I'd like to call this meeting in the Princeton City Council order. Before we call the roll, we have a motion for attendance of a city council member that's not present here with us tonight.
I move that we allow Councilman Newman to appear electronically in tonight's meeting.
We have a motion and second. Clerk call roll and a motion.
Councilmember Gomez.
Hi.
McCall.
Hi.
McCransky.
Hi.
Mayor Mabry.
Hi, thank you. Now we go ahead and go roll call please.
Mayor Mabry.
Here.
Councilmember Newman. Jerry. Can you hear me Jerry?
Yes, we're here.
Okay, here, alright. Gomez.
Yes.
McCall.
Here.
Mayor Mabry, I'm sorry, McCransky.
Mayor McCransky. Think about it. Thank you. Motion carries. We're gonna go ahead now and have the pledge allegiance. Please join us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Now we're gonna go to public comment. Public comments available for anyone to speak to the council at the beginning of the meeting as well as at the end. I'd like to ask the limited three minutes. If you'd like to speak to the council, feel free to come up to the microphone. All you have to do is state your name, please. Please.
May I? Hi, my name is Robert Nelson. I brought this up last week, or the last meeting two weeks ago. There's people that have committed crimes that are on the payroll. What's the status on that?
Well, we do not make any comments during public comment period. And again, this is something that is a civil matter in court. You can go and talk to the county court on that.
Okay.
So, we're not here to make any judgmental decisions tonight, but if you'd like to speak for another two minutes, we'd like to speak.
I just wanted to bring it to the public's awareness that there are tax dollars still funding all that committed crimes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Do you have any excuse?
If you'd like, you can stay or you can go, whoever you prefer.
Any excuse.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Anyone else here for public comment? Okay, seeing that, now we'll go to the approval of the minutes from the Republican Council meeting.
I move we approve the minutes from the Republican Council meeting on April 1st through 24th.
We have a motion and second. Any questions or comments from the council concerning that? Seeing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Hi.
Gomez.
Hi.
McCall.
Hi.
McCransky.
Hi.
Mayor Mabry.
Hi, thank you. Now we'll go to the approval of invoices with City Clerk Pete Nelson.
For this period in the Department of Council Finance, we have invoices totaling $68,409.66. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, we have invoices totaling $123,763.39. In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling $204,870.40. And in the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling $619,123.23. For a grand total of $1,015,479.68. Mayor, all council members present have confirmed their reviews of all invoices and now are submitted for disposition.
I move we approve the invoices as presented.
We have a motion and second. Any questions or comments from the council concerning those invoices? Seeing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Hi.
Gomez.
Hi.
McCall.
Hi.
McCransky.
Hi.
Mayor Mabry.
Hi.
Next on the agenda is ordinance O-24-005. This is a, an ordinance, this is the second and final reading of the ordinance authorizing a fiscal budget for the period May 1, 2024 through April 30 of 2025. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I move we approve ordinance O-24-005.
We have a motion and second. Is there any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
I approve the budget with the exception of compensation being sent to the chairman.
Okay, Gomez.
Hi.
McCall.
Hi.
McCransky.
Hi.
Mayor Mabry.
Hi.
Next on the agenda is, lo and behold, ordinance O-24-007. This is the ordinance again revising the solar credit to 5.43 cents per kilowatt hour. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I move we approve ordinance O-24-007.
We have a motion and second. Any questions from the council or comments? Seeing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Hi.
Gomez.
Hi.
McCall.
Hi.
McCransky.
Hi.
Mayor Mabry.
Hi.
Next on the agenda is suspension of the requirement for a second reading on ordinance This is an ordinance revising the solar credit to 5.43 cents per kilowatt hour. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I move we approve ordinance O-24-007.
We have a motion and second. Any questions from the council or comments? Seeing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Hi.
Gomez.
Hi.
McCall.
Hi.
McCransky.
Hi.
Mayor Mabry.
Hi.
Next on the agenda is, lo and behold, ordinance O-24-007. This is the ordinance again revising the solar credit to 5.43 cents per kilowatt hour. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I move we approve ordinance O-24-007.
We have a motion and second. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Hi.
Gomez.
Hi.
McCall.
Hi.
McCransky.
Hi.
Mayor Mabry.
Hi.
Next on the agenda is, a special petition, I'm sorry, special use petition for Second Story Teen Center locating in a business B2 zone district. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this petition and it is submitted for disposition.
I move we approve special use permit for Second Story Teen Center.
We have a motion and second. I believe on that, that came from us from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
That's a recommendation for the planning commission, yes.
Okay, very good. Any questions from the council concerning that? Very good. Clerk call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Hi.
Gomez.
Hi.
McCall.
Hi.
McCransky.
Hi.
Mayor Mabry.
Hi.
Next on the agenda is, a special petition, I'm sorry, special use petition for Second Story Teen Center locating in a business B2 zone district. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this petition and it is submitted for disposition.
I move we approve special use permit for Second Story Teen Center.
We have a motion and second. I believe on that, that came from us from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
That's a recommendation for the planning commission, yes.
Okay, very good. Any questions from the council concerning that? Very good. Clerk call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Hi.
Gomez.
Hi.
McCall.
Hi.
McCransky.
Hi.
Mayor Mabry.
Hi.
Next on the agenda is, special use petition for the City of Princeton/Altorfer Incorporated locating a 1-megawatt solar array on Peggy Lane. This is also a recommendation for approval from the Princeton Plan Commission. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this petition and it is submitted for disposition.
I move we approve special use permit, City of Princeton-Altorfer, 1-megawatt solar array.
We have a motion and second. Any questions or comments from the council concerning this? If I could, what do you think Jeff said would get started on this project? Just a rough idea.
Well, they're actually hoping to get out there and seed it here this month. But as far as actual construction, it'll be this summer. They hope to have it online around December.
Very good.
I believe I sent an email to everybody back with that info.
Yeah, that's great. Appreciate that. Appreciate again the Planning and Zoning Commission for their volunteers for working on these different issues. So, if we could go ahead, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Hi.
Gomez.
Hi.
McCall.
Hi.
McCransky.
Hi.
Mayor Mabry.
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Any else?
I think that's it for me.
Very good. Now we're gonna go to the city manager report, please, Teresa.
First thing on the agenda, and I got a couple things to add. The financial report for February of 2024, you have that in your packet. I see a little bit caught up, it seems like. We should be about 80% to 90% spent and received on that. And it's pretty much falling in line. There's always gonna be some outliers, but it pretty much falls where we're expecting. I had a question on Marion Street Sewer Project. Just as a quick update, they are reviewing the guidelines right now for the bidding process and they should go up to bid in June. So, with that anticipation of the construction probably, unfortunately, probably gonna fall late summer, fall, that time. So, even if they start in the fall, early winter, they can still make some pretty good progress. So, moving along, and we've already actually started reporting on some of the grant funds for that, that we've spent. And then in the budget, you'll also, there was that $50,000, which is a match for that grant that is, that is figured into the budget. So, we're quick to go on all of that.
Great.
Late summer, hopefully.
Thank you.
So, bids in June. Just a quick update as well, we kinda knew this was gonna happen as soon as we released the letter in the first round of utility bills, the garbage news with the garbage trucks. The garbage trucks are in the Quad Cities now officially. With that being said, Janet, myself, Aaron, and Mike, who actually drives the trucks, have been needing to try and figure out how to get these totes rolled out. Seems like an easy task, not necessarily, but we think we've got it figured out. Hopefully it's now received a letter, not yet. The next two utility bills, those residents will also receive their letter, but I think it's been on Facebook, of course. So, we're getting calls, Janet, I'm sorry. The calls that are coming in, the emails that are coming in, reserving totes, but thank you, you guys are handling it like a gem. So, just as I wanted to give a quick update on some of the random questions or the repeated questions that we've been getting so that people are aware. After getting the letter, if you wanna reserve your tote, that's a smaller garbage tote, we have the 95s and 65s, limited number of 65s. Please email tote@princeton-il.com or call City Hall, but press option 2 so that gets to the right location. When the garbage totes are arriving at your residence, there will be a note on the garbage tote, which will look like this, I've already got it drafted, it's ready to go, but it's basically gonna, going to remind everybody, please put your trash in bags inside the can. Where you set, where they set the can that day is where you need to put your garbage in, when you put it out. That's because the yard needs room to move. So, what else is on here? Garbage does need to be out by 5 o'clock in the morning. Main reason for this is with the reconfiguration of the trucks, some of the routes, your route's not gonna change the day, but the route that they take that day may be adjusted. So, if it's normally picked up at 7, it's not necessarily gonna be picked up at 7 anymore. It may be picked up at 6 or 5 or something like that. So, just have it out by 5. And recycling will be picked up at a later date, because we'll have to deliver those totes at a separate time. And, I think that fell from the letter anyways. Yard waste will remain the same, nothing's gonna change there. Garbage stickers will be necessary for larger items such as furniture, just as we're doing now, but if you have more garbage that will fit into that can with the lid closed, you will have to get a sticker for that extra garbage. But put it in one of your old garbage cans, that'll be fine, we'll come around and get that. And then we also are getting this question on what do we do with our old garbage cans? Well, if you don't wanna use it for brush and it's still in good condition, we're gonna line up a location down by the street department where you, if you don't want that can anymore but it's still in good shape, drop it off, somebody else may want it, they can come pick it up. If you have it in really bad shape, put it in the garbage pile out there of old cans, but you'll have to drop it off at the location. But if it's a good can, somebody else might want it. So, we don't wanna just be throwing away nice garbage cans. And then if you're in an apartment, we get some questions on apartments, your totes will be marked for whose apartment they go with, okay? So, as we get more questions, we'll keep trying to keep a list of what some of these questions are, but just, we thank everybody for their patience with this and I thank the ladies downstairs, because it's been, I don't think we quite expected the inundation of phone calls, which is why there's an email address for it now. So, but people are excited. So, we're really excited to get this going. There'll be two days of training for the four of the guys to go get trained on the garbage trucks, as well as our mechanic to make sure he's understanding all the new ins and outs of the trucks. So, we're very excited, it's been a long time coming. I know our guys that are on the backs of the garbage trucks are excited to be able to start doing some other projects too. So, and it's to safety. For me, it's always been a safety issue, so. Another thing I wanna touch on, the last thing that I'm super excited to, may finally make an announcement about, is we are so excited to welcome Michael Ziering as our Planning and Zoning Administrator, our new one. He actually just started today. A little bit of background on Michael, I think most people probably know him, but he's got experience in architecture and urban design, and actually, anybody that knows Michael knows he has a passion for Princeton. So, that's huge for us here. He is a graduate of Princeton, and another graduate of University of Illinois, so.
Yeah, he gets to.
Yeah, he got. Actually, Michael went to the same, basically the same schooling I went to there in the urban planning, so it's neat to have somebody that's went through that same program here. Prior to, or after graduating, he went to and worked at SAC Wireless in Chicago, where he worked closely with jurisdictions to acquire building permits, zoning approvals for telecommunications projects, and then went to, in 2019, went to Studio K Architecture as a project coordinator, architecture designer. He's also a big volunteer in the community, which is always great to have that as well. He serves on our Historic Preservation Committee, Commission, as well as our Fighting Pedestrian Commission. So, with that being said, I'm so excited to have you. I know Pete's still been today.
I don't know if I have anything to add, other than I'm pretty comfortable letting go, although some might say I let him go several years ago. But I'm really happy to have Michael aboard and I expect big things from him and he's gonna need to challenge a lot of your problems.
Thank you, Michael. We appreciate it. Anything else? Teresa, thank you very much. Pete is transitioning, first quarter roughly of next year, 2025, Pete's gonna be retiring, but in the process of all that, he's kinda like the old gunslinger in the saloon, he's gotta back out of that saloon slowly firing. And so, we've got a good person on board for planning and zoning, and we're working with a transition from Pete being the city clerk to our deputy city clerk, Janet will be taking over and will be announcing that shortcoming. So, we've got some good things happening, because Pete's gonna be one of those people that we gotta keep on speed dial, hopefully when he fully retires, so he's gonna get those questions answered. So, a couple things, when Teresa talks about the time it takes to work on grants, and she's been diligently working on that Marion Street grant for, and so it's sanitary sewer, it's not storm sewer, sanitary sewer, how long have you been working on that roughly?
At least a year and a half.
Yeah, almost two years. I think it's been a couple years.
I'm gonna look at Janet, because we actually have to go through a whole process for the, to get income statistics for the project again. That's probably a year and a half.
Great. So, we appreciate your efforts on that. So, when we think about what's gonna be happening this summer, fall in Princeton with some, as Teresa would say, major projects, we've got the state working on the project at the corner of Main and Peru, it's really their project. We do fund some of that, but it's a bargain for us on what little bit we have to fund. It's about $900,000, our project, and we had to kick in about $50,000.
Probably $50,000 to $70,000.
That's the best money we'll ever spend on those kind of numbers. And then we have South Main Street, part of the street department's overlay program. So, from Main and Peru, when Advance starts that work, or whoever the contractors on that, I believe is Advance, then we'll be paving all the way down South Main Street to approximately the courthouse. And the street department's been working on fixing some sidewalks along that route now, so they'll be ready for that repaving of that surface. We also have, we call it the Amtrak Campus, that's gonna be a big project where they're gonna be putting in a whole new parking lot, so we will eliminate the gravel, and we'll have a hard surface, we'll have green space, we'll have a possibility of a charging station for an electric or a vehicle or two there at that site. So, we have some great things happening there. And then, of course, we've got our Marion Street project, and then there's all the other projects that happened during the course of the year. So, thank you, Teresa, for working on those things. The Marion Street report, a couple things, I'm just gonna go down to the podium, it's gonna be very brief this evening. So, under Positively Princeton, I know that council members and they do the same thing I do, we travel to other communities to see what other communities are doing, what we can learn from them. And we don't need to reinvent the wheel. And then there's communities that come look at what is going on in Princeton. About a week ago, I was invited to go to Silvis, the mayor of Silvis invited me to come over. Silvis is, I believe, around about the same size as Princeton, about 8,000 people, but as the mayor would say, they're coupled up with neighbors that total 400,000 people in the Quad Cities. But they have their own entity, it's a city administrator form of government, which is similar to our city manager form of government. There's eight aldermen, and then the mayor, and the mayor works part-time at a local lumberyard. And so, I went over on a Friday, started in the morning, had a chance to tour City Hall, had a chance to tour the police department. The police chief sends his greetings, and he gave me a couple of coins to give to our chief. And then I went to the fire department, had a nice visit with the fire chief. Fire department, they don't have an ambulance service, and they only have one full-time firefighter. So, we have to be very thankful for our firefighter EMTs, because over there, again, we're not picking on Silvis, it's just, it's a different type of government, and they rely on hospitals to come from joining communities to help with those emergencies. So, anyway, I went to the street department and all the challenges we have, the street superintendent was complaining about, he's got dump trucks that are 15 years old, and they're rusty, and they can't keep them going. So, we have the same challenges as many communities. So, we had a good time in Silvis this past weekend, I was up to Lake Geneva, I wanted to, just hadn't been there in a long time, and then I went to Waukesha, Wisconsin, just to look at a few things. But in the process of taking these little day trips that I enjoyed, last year I went to Cedar Rapids, Iowa, and I wanna show you something that Cedar Rapids, Iowa is doing, and it's really kind of a neat little thing. Cedar Rapids, Iowa, like any community, they work with their litter and picking up trash, and they have the, they call it the City Managers One Bag Challenge, and we're gonna call that the city, the mayor's one bag challenge, we're gonna steal that idea from Cedar Rapids, Iowa. So, I wanna give Cedar Rapids full credit for this. They came up with the idea of putting together a little package that would include a pair of gloves, and I appreciate Ace Hardware, I worked with them on this project, and Ace was very kind to give a substantial discount on these gloves, as well as trash bags. So, the Cedar Rapids project included a trash bag, a pair of gloves, and then we add the sticker, because we want people to be able to put that trash out on the curb. And so, this whole process here is the mayor's challenge for people to pick up trash, and certainly if you wanna pick up, be an overachiever, pick up more than one bag of trash, we would certainly appreciate that. But it's a, it's a little thing. Cedar Rapids, they have had over 30,000 bags of collective trash in their community. So, what I did tonight was, I've got, for the audience members, I've got 15 sets of gloves, I'm gonna put them right over here, and if you live in the city limits or call Princeton home, we'd love to have you take a pair of gloves, the sticker, and the Earth Day is coming up here on April 22nd, but anytime you wanna get out and pick up trash, we'd love to have you participate in this program. And again, these little things makes the town look good, and we all understand the importance of details when people come to visit communities. So, there we go. That's the one bag challenge, again, full disclosure stolen from Cedar Rapids, Iowa. A lot of good things came out of Iowa. I know that we have certain people that appreciate colleges, certain colleges, but let's face it, the University of Iowa and Kate McCarthy, holy smoke, so many things going on there this year with women's basketball and the, and what she, a few people smiling here. So, anyway, I would just like to say, final comment would be is, our community, our front door, it really starts out at the interstate and works its way into town. And when you travel, you do have a tendency to judge the community by, as you pull off to the interstate, and we just wanna keep our community neat and tidy, not just out by the interstate, but throughout our community. So, an opportunity for the public to help us with that. So, thank you very much, and we're looking forward to Earth Day, and also, I know that the street commission's got some things they're doing for our birthday. So, thank you very much. Is there any old business to come before the council? Is there any new business to come before the council? Is there any additional public comment from the public that they'd like to speak? Feel free to come up to the microphone, state your name, please.
My name is Diana Martin, I live on Marion Street. Is there any way those bids could go out sooner, so what, it could be done while the school is not in session, the buses that are carrying traffic?
I wish they could, but it's really up to DCO, this is the funding agency.
Okay. And what is the lag time for the recycling, or the household recycling, to pick back up again?
May 20th is when they'll start back up.
May 20th, okay. And the garbage cans are gonna be when again?
May 3rd. Last week of April going into May.
Okay. Will you hold the household recycling until?
There will be recycling pickups that week.
Oh, okay.
And then there won't be any again until May 20th. And then it's every other week after that.
Every other, okay, very good. And with the Marion Street project that is for sanitary, only not storm, is the city going to be doing anything for the storm sewer?
At this point, not yet, no. That was due to the funding of the grant, they didn't allow for that portion.
Okay. Will the surface be repaved and with curb and gutter?
It'll be repaved after it settles. So, it'll be, if everybody remembers what Thompson Street was done.
Right, right.
It'll have to settle, and then you'll get a new tape.
And will it be repaved?
I think they're gonna do some level of, not quote me on this, but they're gonna make sure they look at the curbs and stuff, but we'll see how things are looking when they go along with the project, because we know that's gonna be an issue. So, we don't wanna be tearing stuff up again.
Especially around the school and the intersection of Homer and Marion. And on the south side across from me, those houses really sit below the street level. So, curb and gutter would be pretty.
What's that corner?
Marion and Homer. That's where the buses come off of Peru and go to Lake, and come around, and then they usually come down there. There's at least three buses that go down Marion Street for on their route. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Additional comments, public comments? Jennifer, please.
Jennifer Cole, I'm the executive director for the chamber. First of all, very humbly, I stand up here and I wanna thank all of you, Mayor Mabry, Mike, Marty, and Hector for supporting the chamber. We will definitely put that money to good use. There's a lot of things we have planned, and so on behalf of myself and some of the board members that are sitting out here tonight, we thank you very much for promoting this. Michael, I'm super excited to have you in that position, so congratulations. I love working with you in different community projects. Just so you all know too, I had sent an email to Teresa to invite you guys to our annual e-meeting, which is happening the 25th, so if you could come and celebrate, Mayor Mabry will be speaking, Homestead will be doing their announcements, which everybody looks forward to. So, there's a table reserved for the city, so we would love to have you guys all join us. Cafe Grace catering too, so if that's something you love, it will be a yummy meal. PM. We invited all the Bureau County High Schools, uh, schools. Um, we're also including the eighth grade, the Princeton eighth grade, so that's going to be super fun. They're even going to have their own little survey that they go around with. So, um, Low and Junior High has been very, very helpful, and they're super excited that their kids can come and take part. Um, we also added the volunteer fair component this year, because as we all know, we need volunteers in this community, because we have a lot going on, and that takes a lot of manpower. Um, so we do have a few of our wonderful community organizations setting up tables to talk to the students about volunteering, and maybe something might spark in them. Maybe they have a heart for service for the flags of freedom, or something of that nature. So, those tables will be there. We have also asked them to talk about any scholarship opportunities, because this is open to freshmen through seniors, so it's better just to educate them and let them know what's on the horizon as they get set to graduate. So, um, something that we heard about last year that we didn't offer, because we really wanted to focus on the students, was that the event was not open to the public. But because we have so much on the calendar already, instead of creating a whole other event, we're actually going to open to the public from four to six PM. So, that will allow students to come back with their parents, or it will in, allow community members to come and take part if they're in the job market, um, or looking to volunteer. So, that's happening this Friday. We'd love for everybody to come out. Um, last year, I think we had close to forty businesses, this year we have over fifty. So, um, some out of town as well, like Ellenway Cement, um, DCI Manufacturing, which is going to be coming to town, which is great, um, Festus, which is the wind towers. So, a ton of Chamber members, Ali's is coming, so just super excited and, um, hope you guys all come to that. Princeton High School, Janice High School.
Thank you, Jenica.
Thank you.
Yes.
Victoria, come on, please. Glad to have you, Victoria.
Hi, everybody. Um, I just wanted to announce that our Princeton Tourism Grants are open. Um, we've seen quite a few come through already, but just a reminder that those are due on May thirty-first, and, uh, we'll notify everyone by, of, of the, of the award amount by June thirtieth. Um, if anyone has any questions about that, we have, um, copies available in City Hall, and you also can pull it up from our website, PrincetonTourism.org. Um, we have a lot of events coming up here in Princeton, as Jenica mentioned, but we've got something going on almost every weekend. So, I, um, I printed off copies, and I'll set them here on the table, um, uh, of our events, um, going on through May, May through June, and some save the dates. This is our latest publication, I thought it might be helpful, helpful if you want to stick it on your fridge. Um, this Saturday, the, uh, Bureau County History Center in conjunction with their nineteen twelve exhibit, which features Titanic survivor Nellie Becker, um, they're bringing the Titanic back to the big screen at the Apollo Theater. Um, you, you, twelve dollars includes popcorn and a drink, if anyone's in case you're going to that. Um, we also announced our summer street concert series, so I have, I'll have copies of these flyers as well. And, um, these are just for the council, our Chamber after hours, to save the date, um, and I also included where we're at with our sponsorship, so let's take two and pass it down. Thank you. I think that's all from me.
Victoria, when's our first street concert?
June seventh.
June seventh, so we're not that far out.
Yes. Yeah, it'll be here in a week. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria, appreciate it. Any other public comment? Anybody else? Any, um, seizure, I think we're down to, uh, closing, uh, the meeting, please.
Let's move adjournments to regular meeting and reconvene on Monday, May sixth, twenty-four, six PM, City Hall.
We have a motion in second, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
McCransky?
Aye.
Mayor Mabry?
Aye. This means adjourned, please feel free to stick around and visit and share ideas, please. Thank you.